A special meeting to order, it's August 24th, 2020, it's not on the agenda, but we're not going to bunch this. Okay. So, we had a deadline come up unexpectedly that's unless we want to spend, well like around two, three thousand dollars on special town ballots, we gotta make a decision today on whether or not we want to put any type of question at all in the November ballot. Um, the deadline is usually later in the year, but it's moved up because of COVID and.
Military.
Military, okay, there we go, so. Um, I guess let's uh, let's get a pulse as to where everybody's at, let's start with uh, let's start with Carrie and see what Carrie's recommendation is, and then go down and see what each board member thinks, and then we can.
So I'll start with a little bit of background, I mean I I did talk to Dan on Thursday just for some good housekeeping, I have a sample question, should you decide to go that way? Um, I kind of sensed from listening to the select board for the last, you know, two, two months that you were leaning towards land, even though you decided to go forward with everything, so at this point, I recommend putting the land question on the ballot. And I have a revised, I worked with Jackie, Jackie Brown is gonna join us, I think via Zoom. And um, she worked, I have a revised map of the piece of land we were talking about as well. Um, so I can show you that.
What revision?
We were talking about where the easements were and the, what the changes might look like on that piece, that parcel of land. And basically you write in your assessment that that was one of the best and only places in the block. So give you that. One in the middle is ours for the town hall. I'm gonna need reader for this, this stuff is small, I can't print it any bigger.
Okay.
And I'll also give you the draft question, just see my questions at the bottom line. What Dan was talking about, if we need to, we can go into executive session, if you want to discuss the details of that transaction, it hasn't finalized of course. But we didn't think the meeting needed to be an executive session, been talking about this.
Okay, good.
Might need that back actually.
Yeah, the line is gonna be moved around. It might make most sense to have the.
Sorry, running, I don't want to be that close to the camera, but you can have that copy.
You see how the line goes from the proposed mound site and then kind of squiggle through the middle of the property? It might make more sense to have it hugged here anyway, because we won't be able to build anything that close to the line due to setbacks. So if we can bring this down here and then have it go straight up, or even all the way down here and have it come straight up, that might be the way to do it. And that would open up quite a bit to the lifting that mound to do like a soccer field or something. I'm sure we could do a soccer field over the top of where the force main is anyway. Just whether or not we ever decided to invest in buildings of good turf, whether or not we want to dig that up if there's an issue with the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think leave as much accessible as possible.
So, it says proposed boundary line for lot one, does that mean that we've got to go through a subdivision?
I think it means that Jackie goes.
In order to sell it?
Right. Because right now, it's all one parcel. I mean, one and two are combined.
Yeah, one and two are combined, but the warp street locks out on its own by the looks of it already?
I believe so.
So it's a, this could be an administrative two lot subdivision that Becky could handle in house, we're not talking.
Yeah, we can get the semantics of this done in plenty of time.
Just know that there's a lot of.
There's a, there's a couple moving parts, but nothing too crazy, but this was something we discussed at length, so. And I actually, obviously didn't have any idea what two versus, oh, so sorry. That's Jackie Brown. Hi Jackie. Don't know where the password is for it.
I, I gotta turn on my computer, forgot it.
Okay, yeah, so Jen's gonna go work on that, uh, we just barely started talking about it, so. Okay. You cannot. Yep. Right, changing by the minute, yeah, that's fine, I mean, this is really a discussion, they, the board, four or five of them are here, but we hadn't hadn't had any discussions with them as a group, so, um, we're not, they're not holding us up, we're not just standing here staring at each other. Yep, I just printed it, they're looking at it right now. That's awesome, yep. I absolutely can, I will, you're welcome, we'll work on that, shouldn't take too much longer. Thank you for letting me.
Eat the same amount of pipe almost, just keep it right around the line, have it shoot. Because this is all setback anyway.
Right.
Then we get the whole middle area. You know? Let move that force main and have it hook right here and shoot. That doesn't make much sense, you know?
The question looks fine to me.
It does, yeah, I mean, well, I called Dan because we've often, all the time, but ask questions of him after the question is either approved or denied, I thought maybe we should start there. He was comfortable with this format.
What do you think Stan?
Uncomfortable with it.
Jessica?
Yeah, I think it looks great.
Donovan?
I think it's a little tight myself, but because if you, how big is the building that we're proposing, like, it's like sixty by two hundred roughly, is that what it is?
Um, it was about thirteen thousand square feet, so I don't remember.
It's twelve thousand sixty by twenty, right?
Uh, I think so, but.
I mean, you put that, you know, if you're sixty, two sixty-five minus seventy-one, you're under two hundred, then you minus sixty from that, you're down to one forty, split that in two, you're seventy feet inside of your building. That's just the widthways, now you go lengthways, two hundred, I realize it's long and narrow, but, that'd mean it'd be nice to see if we had a.
Well, they can make, they, who knows, they can customize the building to the site once we have.
Want to decide the site.
They were more comfortable with that than the generic, just any building, but you're right, I mean, they might have to make some changes.
You could put a perp on the side, back.
And you get a well, you get two wells behind where the building would be.
Is this contiguous with our land?
Not.
So our land's not on here?
Correct.
So there you have more land.
I mean, there's warp street in the middle.
Yeah.
But we own, it's a public road and we don't know where it's on the other side, that's a good question.
So we're, are we anywhere close to having a signed PNS? On that agreed price?
Yes, that's the, that's, yes.
Okay, and does that include contingencies for any ESA?
It has the same verbiage that it had for that on the, on the current MOU, yes.
Well, that one said it's, it's understood that there are no contaminants or pollutants present.
Mm-hmm.
Does that explicitly give us the right to go confirm that? I would because I would want to do what we just did, the garage property on that property, and then I'd want to do a um, I'd wanna, I'd want a clause that the easements would be to the satisfaction of the town, like, there will be an easement for a septic system and a drill well on lot one, or two, lot two. Uh, but the locations of such easements should be at our because it just, I mean, warp street's right over here. So there's this whole area over here that could be used for some sort of rec purpose if we really wanted to, I mean, it's a good, it's a good chunk of land, I don't know.
And the current building, the architects are keeping in mind that we can, we will be able to easily expand on the admin area of that building, so we're gonna obviously make sure that's put on the property to accommodate growth as well. Yes, could be rec fields, but just in case somebody asks, we're trying to create open for the future, future expansion without too much disruption of the current building. For the proposed building.
Is the mound size like, have max capacity that current staffing levels here?
Are existing on here?
No, 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 the one over.
That one, um.
Like, wasn't it, what was the?
Well, it's, if that was said, it would accommodate up to forty-eight with meeting space, so that we were close with the meeting, with a fifty person meeting space. But now, that was with the three bedroom. This is more, more.
She gave us a, a bedroom with a capacity.
Which I don't know how to directly correlate to how much people, how many working individuals and meeting space that means, but it's more the same family bedroom.
I think working individuals is what, twelve gallons, thirteen, somewhere in that range for first.
Right, because nobody's showering and doing dishes generally and all that kind of stuff, so.
Right.
So we're not at capacity anymore with this newer arrangement, but conversely, we're not going to be putting a five hundred person room there either, so it's, it's meant to be an office, but.
Yeah, so that's four hundred ninety gallons of air. Yeah, I mean, if we want to do it, we're gonna do it, um, so why don't we hammer out the question and make sure that's perfect? Because if we do it, we have to make a motion to approve the exact question to go on the ballot.
We do, and um, I'll just get the legal address of that lot, I know it's Georgia Shore Road, but I don't know what the address, the number is yet, but we can insert that.
I'd like the question to somehow say that it's uh, that the purchase is subject to an environmental site assessment. I have a lot of folks who approached me in recent weeks saying that they were, they were concerned about contaminants in that area, and I don't even know if it's a right concern or not, I don't know the history of that, Liam, but it might be something just that.
It's already addressed in the MOU though, you can make this.
Yeah, the dabbling voters in the middle of that, I mean, I'd like somebody to be able to read the question, say they're thinking about doing that, Georgia Shore, they're gonna do their, they're gonna do the site assessment so they'll know, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
There's a lot of other questions that are gonna come up, but you can't put them all in.
Right.
So you can say something to the effect of, as long as the conditions on the MOU are satisfied or something. Which include environmental, but it's not all of them, you're not, you're just.
But they didn't expect any migration anywhere from the site that they, that they did do for us.
Yeah.
And with a hundred and thirty-four pages, they talked mostly about surrounding neighbors that had oil spills.
The other environmental?
Yes.
Yes.
There was no proof, there was no merit to go any further.
I don't know, I mean. Yeah, I, I mean, we want to purchase and sell, so not an MOU for this, if we're gonna go this far, right? We want a contract with a closing date in mind, contingent on voters.
You could certainly move to that immediately after getting an MOU, I just wanted something signed as soon as possible, but yes, that is the next step, I think can be done right afterwards. I mean, we're two months out almost from the election, so.
Well, what's that?
Ballots are going out in September, September nineteenth.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we're gonna have enough time to get the purchase.
Well, not if you're asking people to vote in the middle to end of September on something that hasn't been hammered out yet. That's my only concern, is if people start voting in September, early October, and then they say, okay, subject to the conditions of this, what are the conditions? And we say, oh, we don't know, we're still working on it, or we know that it includes this, but we're working on that, I don't know, it might not.
We're gonna be able to get that done within a month, I mean, we can.
I would just hate to rush it and then have it, or, I don't know, with being a little hypercritical probably, but.
Well, I don't see a need to go any further on, on that, it's done an assessment of where the oil was brought in and stored. Why are we gonna push to do something else?
On this property?
Oh, we, that property, my understanding, the only thing that was stored there were dry, empty tanks.
Yeah, which were removed.
Uh.
Which were removed.
Yes, they're bought out.
Yes.
But think of the optics of having dry, empty oil tanks on that visible from the road frontage for years, where people drove by, and then we tell them we're gonna spend their tax money on buying it and we're not doing the site assessment, that's gonna, that's gonna trigger a few no votes.
But we haven't decided whether we're doing an a site assessment or right now, what we.
Well, that's it, I don't want to approve this without a site assessment.
What we decided was, part of the MOU, the very next legal step, will ask and require that, that there aren't any contaminants.
And the only way to confirm that is with an ESA.
But there might get probably true, that's, I'm just trying to.
If we do an ESA, I'm happy.
So what do you want to do, a phase one or a phase two test?
A real one?
And you won't find it?
But that's fine, you can do, I mean, I, I assume that we were gonna do some level of it because it was asked and actually put in that first, well, first and second draft, it's still in the MOU, I guess, I'm sure.
I mean, I.
This gives you permission to move forward? Does it demand or require that you move forward if something comes up? I feel like if I, if I'm purchasing something, that would make me feel a little bit uncomfortable. And, and set ourselves an internal deadline of getting it done to the middle of September.
Well, I would think when we get a, we should be able to get a purchase and sales together within a day or two. If we're all on the same page about pricing contingencies, that's, that's nothing, and I should be able to hammer that out in less than a half hour.
Yeah, and we were, I mean, Matt and I talked to Jack, to, at Home Order, everyone knows what we're talking about, but last week, um, very receptive to meeting with us whenever possible, so. I don't, I agree that it shouldn't take a lot of time.
I would want a deadline for some sort of site assessment for the middle of September, that at least conduct it, let alone get the results of an actual.
W, your deadline and task has been the, the one we chose.
Right.
To do the initial evaluation. Maybe they're booked through November now, we don't know.
Well, then.
We can't say we want it done in two weeks, we don't know what.
No, but I mean, they, they have worked at it pretty rapidly, so you're right, you've got to ask them.
Right. Did you read the existing for, from task?
For our property, the property.
Yeah, for our property.
It says no migration, but it doesn't say, you know, what was, I know that they were, they were empty tanks, but the optics were people drove by for years and years and saw oil tanks sitting on this property, if we tell them that that's the property we're gonna go watch and buy, they're gonna say, did you make sure there's no oil in the ground? If we say, well, we did one next door and it said there was no migration from that site, so we called it good, they're gonna say, well, you didn't do your due diligence, well, that's what I.
But in our site, I think so.
But, but they also looked at, there's other people that had oil spills a quarter mile radius of our site, and they said there was no migration to our site, is what they said. So if, if that radius encompassed, and I'm sure it did, that other property.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's, it's clean. I, I, you want to spend another ten thousand dollars to verify one site? It's a call we're gonna make, if we want to do it.
All right, um, Jonathan, what do you think?
I don't, I don't, I don't really have a comment right now.
Okay, Jessica, what's your opinion?
Um, I'm comfortable putting this on as is.
I think it's a good question, if my opinion matters, and I think we need to keep in mind that last election the percentage was pretty high, that the voters agree that they want it here in the bag.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we've been talking about it a long time, and it'd be nice to see we're moving forward.
Yeah.
So let's talk internal deadlines, and then we'll hold a vote to put on the. So we want a purchase and sales executed by no later than a week from Friday, I think that's reasonable to give people time to have their attorneys review it, if they did.
It could be two.
Two weeks from Friday to write a purchase and sales on something that's already been agreed to in principle?
The individual involved said there could be something that takes her away from being able to do business for a little while, and that could happen in the interim. Um, I guess if you're prepared to have another meeting to extend that deadline, you can do that, you can have a nice firm deadline for Friday, but it might be out of our control.
Well, it's like a week from Friday.
I know.
So Friday, then put this there a week from that point, gets us past the.
Gets us to September eleventh?
Two weeks, but gets us to September eleventh, yeah, so then we'd have another meeting on the ninth.
So we could save the ninth, I suppose?
Okay, so why don't we do that? And then.
Nine, nine?
Yeah. And let's talk, are there any make or break contingencies for anybody that they would want included in the contract? No? I mean, if we put in there that it's understood there are no contaminants, and we don't, to Stan's point, if we don't spend the ten thousand and we trust the report that we have, and then we get there and we start building and there are contaminants, and we've got recourse for that, so I guess I'm okay with that, as long as it's in there, it's safe in the stands rate. So why don't we do, um, why don't we just do it then? And the only thing I'd want in there is the piece about being new, all I want, and I think she'll be fine with it because it's the same amount of pipe, is the force main for her mound cuts up the middle of the property and over? This all is unbuildable due to our setbacks in this district anyway, so I kind of like the force main to hug the line until it gets even with the mound and then shoot straight up. Um, other than that, I'm, I'm good. So why don't we just put that, why don't we have a vote to put on the ballot, move forward, Jessica, you ready?
Do we need a motion?
We, yeah, we will.
So I'll need a motion to put, uh, this item on the ballot, to the taxpayers of the county, saying, all that's authorized, the select board to spend up to two hundred thousand dollars from the infrastructure development fund to purchase a five point seven seven eight re parcel of land located at, we'll insert the address for the purpose of constructing a new town hall.
I would just add construction of a new town hall in the base, everything.
Yeah, the same old base.
Yeah, in the same home, same area, yeah. And then if we want to get, my inner Alphago Joe's coming out, if we could get the D in development, F in fund capitalized, that would be perfect. There, all right, do we have a second?
I have a second, please.
As amended?
Pardon me?
As amended, right?
As amended, right.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna have this on the ballot, and having this meeting saved us about three thousand dollars in supplemental town ballots, so that was worth having.
And at the next select board meeting, we'll set some, um, dates for public meetings.
Yep, yep.
And explain in greater detail.
We can work to find some venues, maybe we could, you know, what we could do is almost try to pick a good day and have something outside or at the stone house.
Mm-hmm.
Would we have some maps in place?
The logistics of that are difficult, I just need more than three days' notice. Last time, it was a little scary for us, but yes, we can work on something for a bunch of different sites.
Yeah, and have them all over the place.
Mm-hmm. Well, yes, yep.
So does this mean that, uh, we won't be able to get anything about sidewalks on the November ballot, since we talked about maybe the stash?
Right, it, it does mean that right now, because we don't have, we don't know if we got the grant yet, it's just too early, normally that, the information for ballots has to be in mid to the third week of September.
Yeah.
Um, last year, they extended the deadline as far as getting ballots out due to military overseas not being able to get them back in time. So.
So moving up this thing by more than a month is just difficult, but still, I mean, we had and plan on doing it for March.
Yeah.
For March, then we'll have the, the build package, if this passes, we'll have our build package on the ballot in March.
Correct.
Would if we can, and while we're here, the only, this only time we'll be able to consider it, would it be worth maybe adding a little bit of soft cost money, take, or a second question for soft costs to do what we did with the, the garage project, we had like build plans and we were going to bid right around the time that the vote came about, and Alan said the best thing for us for the build package would be to vote on it in November, because the bids will be better if you bid it over the winter. Would it make any sense to pre, to put some money on a ballot for developing the proposal, so that we can get it to a point where it's ready to be bid out before March, and then do it contingent on a March approval like we did the garage? Or do we want to just take what we've got, what we would have had ready for November and then do that in March? When we did the garage, we spent like a hundred fifty thousand dollars on soft costs, but we had it to the point where it was ready.
We added, uh, we spent three hundred and sixty-eight thousand soft costs.
In total, yeah, but even before we.
Yes.
No, no, that was just for twenty eighteen. What we spent in twenty eighteen.
And nineteen, maybe it was a couple of years.
Well, yeah, fiscal year.
It was, it was.
That was, that was one lump sum before we, that's what we paid back to the.
The general fund.
Got it.
General fund, it was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and it had to be all soft costs.
It was.
So, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Would it be worth? I mean, I just, if Alan's telling, if his expert opinion is that we should be trying to bid this thing through the winter.
Well, it wasn't really Alan, it was more Matt.
Matt?
Yeah, Matt, because he said that, you know, when you bid at the beginning of winter or spring, that's when you get the best price generally, because people are building their list for the coming year, you know, so you get some, generally a better deal and, and some of the more higher quality bidders.
We know phase two Freeman, Freeman's a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of where that neighborhood.
Yeah, I was thinking, we, we do have a price for that. And that was for design.
And that would cover a big piece of.
It would.
Do we want to ask the voters concurrently with this question right below it for up to a hundred seventy-five thousand to develop the proposal for March? I mean, if one passes, they'll both pass, and then we can come to them with a more concrete, finite number in March, and maybe do the bidding like our, our project managers recommended.
Can we do the same thing that we did for the PPW, we took the money out of the general fund, then put the question on the ballot after we spent the money, and we use, we pay back.
I thought the last time we, we looked at that situation and said we didn't want to do that again, because if the voters didn't pass it, the general fund would never have been able to be made whole again.
Only on that particular amount, what?
Right.
I mean, if we're gonna run a question here, I just assume get authorized for the, if it's a hundred sixty-three, we'd sound sixty-three, but just to do that second phase and get all the, then we'll have more data to be able to share with people through the winter. We'll have site plans with the building on the site. We'll know what the permits are gonna look like, and I think that might be a, that might give us a better chance of passing in March, I don't know, what do you think, Jonathan?
Yeah, we'll put it on the ballot.
So a separate question, asking to support the soft costs for the town hall project?
Yeah.
Yeah, not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Not to exceed one seventy-five?
Yeah, two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
From the infrastructure?
From the infrastructure fund.
That way we don't have to touch the general fund at all.
Right.
If one passes, the both.
I'm, I'm sorry, what'd you say for a top one right now, what do you think?
Hundred sixty-three thousand.
Hundred and sixty, or a hundred and seventy?
And you want, you want to do one seventy, two, two hundred, okay, then if there's something that we need or some test that we didn't investigate.
Two thousand.
Okay.
Everything's two hundred thousand.
Well, it's, I mean, it's not a demand that you can spend it all, it's just a task, you know?
Yep, up to.
And it's on that project, it's not like we're gonna need it to get, I don't know.
Right, right.
Well, that gives us more to talk about than just, we're gonna buy this piece of land, well, what are you gonna do with it? Well, if you approve this, next, that's what we're gonna do with it, and we'll be back with you with a total proposal that's ready to bid, or it could have, you know, maybe we can get it to a point where we bid it ahead of time. Proceedurally, am I wrong in, in thinking that we had a bid with Connor contingent on the garage passing on Town Meeting Day, when we built the garage, did we get to the point where we had a bid from him already, or did we bid it right after?
Right after the election, right?
Yeah, I think it was right after, I think we had told the club or a couple things right after. I don't remember right now.
Well, that.
I think we should throw in there, um, from previously collected.
Yeah.
Because then the taxpayers know that it's not gonna cost them anything, because we've already collected it.
Yeah, we should put previously collected in both.
I voted on it.
And Pollard.
Yeah, you already did?
I did.
Didn't she heard you say that, I thought you'd been making amended ones.
I'll look into it.
Actually, if the people approve this lot, it's not gonna be as much prep. It's not gonna fly up, do some trees to cut until they approve it, and cut up in December, January.
Yeah, and get it ready to go.
Yeah, get it ready to go.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We ain't in the business to put that on there.
So what do you want the motion to say, so I wrote down something to the effect of, do the taxpayers of the town of St. Albans authorize the select board to spend up to two hundred thousand dollars of previously collected infrastructure development fund, funds to support, and that's, this is where I.
Would it be worth putting in parentheses in both questions after infrastructure development fund, parentheses, local option tax, closed parentheses?
You've had that on a, you had it on previous.
That way it just further.
Spell it out, local option taxes?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so the first part of the question is just.
The local option sales taxes, that way it's like.
But it's, it's taxes, just taxes is legal, appropriate, because there's sales rooms and meals and alcohol, so it.
Got it. Got it.
Yeah, I would not, for anything else.
Perfect.
Um, I don't want to have to figure that part out. Um, so shall I put two hundred thousand of the infrastructure development fund, previously collected infrastructure development funds how, uh, local option taxes for this, I didn't really work this out, for the, to support the design and soft costs associated with the new town, proposed new town hall.
Design, design and pre-development costs.
Pre-development.
Yeah, it's soft costs, most people don't.
Anyone don't know, yep. Soft, so support, you want to just put pre-development costs in?
Pre-development costs, yeah.
That's pretty.
Yeah, and then when we do our public forums, we're literally gonna say, if you approve this, it's gonna come off the package price that we would have proposed in March anyway.
Yeah. Support pre-development costs associated with proposed new town hall.
It would have been, yeah, because it would have been included in what we would have presented in March.
Yep.
This allows us to get it done, too, that way we're closer to shovel-ready by the time March comes around, we can actually start building next year. Because we got to that point with the town garage, and then we, we were shovels in the ground on, in May. So, if that was the same case here, we could be, you know, this time next year, we could have a building stand, probably won't be complete.
Get our hopes up, go upstairs.
I mean, there's, that, that gets us to the point where that's possible, though.
Okay.
Want to read it again?
Yeah, could you read it again, what you have?
Yeah. Um, shall the legal voters of the town of St. Albans authorize the select board to spend up to two hundred thousand dollars of previously collected infrastructure development funds, parentheses, local options, taxes, parentheses, to support pre-development costs associated with the new town hall?
Yeah.
So we need a motion and a second, we'll hold the vote and we'll adjourn.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve it, because Ken read it. We're good, without it.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to adjourn or any other business anybody wants to bring up before we adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn, thank you, everybody.